Oga, satanan nga mga guest na to na specialisato ang mga mati-national comprehensive by school mga nag-o-jiting mga students. Good afternoon. The fourth regular session of the seventh city council is now called to order. Please rise for the opening prayer to be given by Honorable Edmundo G. Pang Jr. to be followed by the senior national anti-provincial humanity.
Let's... Hello, 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 hello. Let's put ourselves in the loving presence of God in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. Heavenly Father, we come before you today with hearts full of gratitude. Thank you for the gift of this day, for the opportunity to gather in your presence, and for the love and grace you continually show us. We ask that you guide our thoughts, our words, and our actions during this time together. May your peace fill our hearts and minds, and may your wisdom lead us as we seek to you honor. In all that we do, we invite your whole spirit to be with us, to inspire us, and to help us grow in faith, love, and unity. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
O Provincia na minamahal, sangsubangan ang Dabaw. Manuwa kau na madayaw, ya na guyun yang utaw. Malipayon kay palanggakaw ng Diyos. Matabayang kalupan mo, yang tanoma buhong ahol. Dakat kuma nga suba, madayka yang hisga, kabuhian kawilihan ang kanan. Umahan na Dabaw Oriental, langit ma pawa ay. Yang kabuta yan, yang kabataan, maya maday magandahay. Mas dihain pa kami kumakto, kami mo uli anikan mo. Garbu nami na Dabawenyo, yang pakserbi sangkat jawan mo. Palangga sya manpaki, yang manpo di makati. Sangkat kayan, sangkat kabataan, sangkat ang kaway kayu. Magkandak yang manjeritay, kayang paliput magandahay. Sangkat jawan yang sangupat, iya iya nyaribahay. Tagamati mati na paku, tagamati mati na daku. Tagamati mati na gurun, ya tagamati mati na. Tagamati mati na darun, tagamati mati na manun. Tagamati mati na gurun, sa Diyos laba magkagakahu. Tagamati madayaw, tagamati mati.
Again, good afternoon to each and everyone. Mr. Secretary kindly proceed to the roll call.
Honorable Samuel Rodriguez, Honorable Delphine Miones, Honorable Tara Marie Rabat Gaeta, Honorable Sina Princess Campos, Honorable Edmundo Pang Jr., Honorable Abilino Capinha Jr., Honorable Arman Valera,
Present.
OIC Vice Mayor, Honorable Sandra Paul Alcantara, Honorable Jerome Deeng Hirang, Honorable Rojelyo Pabio, Honorable Paulilio Miones, Honorable Daniel Makaobos, Honorable Tomas Sebilieno, Honorable Lorenzo Leo Girbat on official business Davao City. Excuse. Coro Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Under our house rules, Rule 6, Section 2, in the absence of the regular presiding officer, we will choose among ourselves to act as a temporary presiding officer. Now the floor is open for nomination. Honorable Kobe Capinha, you're highly recognized.
Thank you very much, Honorable Presiding Officer. Good afternoon, everyone. Mr. Chair, this representation would like to nominate Honorable Delphine Doddo Miones, if there is no objection, to be our temporary presiding officer for today's regular session, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Kobe Capinha. There was a motion by Honorable Kobe Capinha that Honorable Delphine B. Miones is act as a temporary presiding officer. Any second of his motion, seconded by all members present, is there any objection? Hearing none, the motion is heard by approved. Few minutes recess. And coming board member, Arman Valera. Thank you so much. Session resume. What is the next order, Mr. Secretary?
Reading and consideration of previous minutes of the regular session dated January 21, 2025, Mr. Chair.
I believe each member has a copy of the minutes. Is there any proposed correction or, I mean, means to the minutes? Since there is none, may what is the pleasure of the members of this august body? Counselor Capinha.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I move for the adoption of the minutes of the previous regular session dated January 21, Mr. Chair. I do so move.
Thank you so much, Counselor Capinha. There is a motion for the adoption of the minutes as stated by Counselor Capinha. Do I hear a second to the motion? Jules, seconded by all members present, is there any objection? Hearing none, the motion is heard by approved. Next item.
For question or no guests invited, privilege or other reports, observations?
Is there any member wants to avail the privilege hour? Counselor Pabio.
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. Good afternoon to all. From Communication Number 38 Series of 2025, not certified urgent coming from the local chief executive has asked permission from the august body that this mission to be tackled during an assigned business suspending house rule.
Thank you. Is that all, Counselor Pabio?
That's all.
Okay. Please take note, Mr. Secretary.
Properly noted, Mr. Chair.
Counselor Capinha.
Thank you again, Mr. Chair. Honorable Chair, I have here urgent communication. Communication Number 39-2021 referred to the Committee on Finance, Budget, and Appropriation, and at the same time referred to the Committee on Social Welfare and Community Development, Mr. Chair, chaired by Honorable Sina Princess D. Campos, Mr. Chair. In behalf of the two committees, Mr. Chair, I would like to manifest and request the members of this august body, since the communication is urgent in nature, be tackled under an assigned business without suspending the house rules, Mr. Chair, and Communication Number... Communication...
31 and 34.
Communication Number 31
And 34.
And Communication Number 34, Mr. Chair, referred to the Committee on Finance, Budget, and Appropriations, although not signified urgent, but also requesting the approval from the members of this august body that these two communications with regards to the barangay budget, we tackled under an assigned business without suspend... I mean, during suspended house rules, Mr. Chair, for the discussion and possible approval.
Thank you so much, Counselor Capinha. Mr. Secretary, please take note to the manifestation of Counselor Capinha.
Properly noted, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Counselor Deeng Hirang.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. Mayang hapon satanan. Mr. Presiding Officer, on behalf of the members of the Committee on Housing and Land Utilization, this representation would like to request the members of this august body that Communication Number 40-2025 be discussed under an assigned business without the need of suspending the house rules, since the request of the local chief executive is urgent. This is regarding the memorandum of understanding between the concerned government agencies, civil society organization, non-government organizations, and other stakeholders for the creation of the project interagency committee in the city of Mati, Mr. Presiding Officer. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Counselor Capinha, again.
Deeng Hirang, Mr. Presiding Officer. Deeng Hirang.
Nagistorya manggud me Dr. Capinha kanina gud. Thank you so much again, Counselor Deeng Hirang. Please take note, Mr. Secretary.
Properly noted, Mr. Chair.
Before we proceed, the chair would like to recognize the presence of Honorable Alcantara. Please take note. Next, is there any other concern? We are still under a privilege hour. There being none, please proceed, Mr. Secretary, to the next item.
No proposed ordinance for first reading, no proposed resolution for first reading. For communication messages, Communication Number 30 Series 2025, for the information of Honorable Body, this pertains to the letter from the Sangguyan Pala-Lawiga Secretary of Dava Oriental pertaining to Resolution Number 17-1157-01-2025 entitled "A Resolution Declaring Appropriation Ordinance Number 05, Series of 2024 of the City of Mati, Dava Oriental, Operative in Its Entirely Subject to Some Conditions." Communication Number 31 Series 2025 referred to the Honorable Capinha, Chairman of Committee on Finance, this pertains to the pre-reviewed annual budget for calendar year 2025 o barangay mamali di city to be discussed under an assigned business suspended house rules. Communication Number 32 Series 2025 referred to the Chairman of Committee on Energy and Water Utilities, Honorable Valera, this pertains to letter from our city mayor addressed to the Honorable Members Sangguyan Panglungsod requesting for a passage of an ordinance adapting the guidelines to facilitate the implementation of energy projects. Communication Number 33 Series 2025, letter from the Honorable Mayor Michelle Rabat addressed to the Honorable Members Sangguyan Panglungsod requesting for a passage of an ordinance providing institutionalizing mandatory representation from indigenous peoples in the Sangguyan barangay and Sangguyan Panglungsod of Mati, Dava Oriental, and providing funds therefore. Jointly referred to Honorable Capinha, Chairman of Committee on Good Government, and Honorable Body Lepiones, Chairman of Committee on Cultural Communities. Communication Number 34 Series 2025 referred to the Honorable Capinha, Chairman of Committee on Finance, this pertains to pre-reviewed Sangguyan kabataan annual budget for calendar year 2025 o barangay langka di city to be operative. This will be discussed under an assigned business suspended house rules. Communication Number 35 Series 2025 Letter from the Honorable Mayor Michelle Rabat addressed to the Honorable Sangguyan Panglungsod members requesting for a passage of various ordinances from City Health Office. Refer to Chairman of Committee on Health and Sanitation, the Honorable Pabio, this pertains on ordinance institutionalizing the adolescent health and development program in the city of Mati, an ordinance establishing Mati tin bayan in the city of Mati providing for its implementation and appropriating funds therefore, and for other purposes. An ordinance institutionalizing the disaster risk reduction and management in health system in the city of Mati. An ordinance institutionalizing the mental health program in the city of Mati establishing mechanisms and guidelines for its implementation, appropriating funds therefore, and for other purposes. And an ordinance institutionalizing the expanded program on immunization in the city of Mati providing funds therefore, and for other purposes. Communication Number 36 Series 2025 for the information of the Honorable Body, this pertains to Executive Order Number 08 Series of 2025 from Honorable Michelle Rabat, City Mayor, reorganizing and reconstituting the City Integrated Ecological Solid Waste Management Board. Communication Number 37 for the information of the Honorable Body, this pertains to Executive Order Number 09 Series of 2025 from Honorable Michelle Rabat, City Mayor, reorganizing the Beach and Awards Committee of the City of Mati. Communication Number 38 Series 2025 Letter from Honorable Michelle and Rabat, City Mayor, addressed to the Honorable Members Sangguyan Panglungsod endorsing local health board resolutions. One, Local Health Board Resolution Number 01 Series of 2025. A resolution requesting the local chief executive to issue an executive order for the creation of a management support unit to assist the local health board operations and management of the special health fund. And number two resolution, Resolution, Local Health Board Resolution Number 02 Series of 2025. A resolution adapting the DOH, DBM, DOF, DILG, and Field Health Joint Memorandum Circular Number 2021-001 entitled "Guidelines for Allocation, Utilization, Monitoring, and Accountability of Special Health Fund." Refer to the Honorable Rojelyo Pabio, Chairman of Committee on Health to be discussed under an assigned business suspended house rules. Communication Number 39 An urgent letter from the local chief executive, Honorable Michelle Rabat addressed to the Honorable Members Sangguyan Panglungsod requesting for a passage of a resolution authorizing the city mayor to sign for and behalf of the city government of Mati the memorandum agreement between the Department of Social Welfare and Development and the city government of Mati relative to the implementation of IX program. Jointly referred to the Honorable Capinha, Chairman of Committee on Finance, and Honorable Campos, Chairman of Committee on Social Welfare and Community Development. As manifested by the Honorable Capinha, this will be discussed under an assigned business without need of suspending the house rules. And last communication, Mr. Chair. Communication Number 40 Series 2025 An urgent letter from Honorable Michelle and Rabat, City Mayor addressed to the Honorable Members Sangguyan Panglungsod requesting for a passage of a resolution authorizing the city mayor to sign for and behalf of the city government of Mati the memorandum of understanding between the National Housing Authority, Province of Dava Oriental Commission on Human Rights, Presidential Commission for the Urban Pool, Department of Interior and Local Government, DILG 11, Department of Human Settlements and Urban Development, 11, Department of Education, 11, Regional Department of Social Welfare and Development, 11, and Philippine National Police, Police Regional Office, 11, Barangay Local Government of Dehikan, Davao Oriental Electric Operative, Mati Water District, and the City Government of Mati for the creation of the project interagency committee in Mati City, Dava Oriental. Refer to Chairman of Committee on Housing and Land Utilization, the Honorable Jerome Deeng Hirang. As manifested by the Honorable Deeng Hirang, this will be discussed under an assigned business. That's all for communication, Mr. Chair. For committee report, we have two committee reports. Committee Report Number 03 by the Honorable Samuel Rodriguez.
The Honorable Rodriguez now recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mayang hapon satanan. So I believe that everybody has a copy of Committee Report Number 03-2025. So this representation, as Chairman of the Committee on Food, Agriculture, Fisheries, and Aquatic Resources, together with the whole composition of this committee, would like to pass and render Committee Report Number 03-2025 for its adoption. I do so move, Mr. Presiding Officer.
There is a motion as manifested by Counselor Rodriguez under Committee Report Number 3-2025. Do I hear a second to the motion? Jules, seconded by all members present, is there any objection? Hearing none, the motion is heard by approved. Next item. Counselor Valera is now recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and once again, good afternoon. Committee Report Number 04 Series of 2025 filed by the Committee on Energy and Water Utilities, subject the proposed ordinance Number 620 Series of 2025 an ordinance prescribing the calibration and sealing of dispensing pumps of liquid petroleum products retail outlets in the city of Mati and penalizing illegal trading of petroleum products, providing penalties thereof. I believe, Mr. Chair, my colleagues has a copy of this Committee Report Number 4. The Committee on Energy and Water Utilities, together with the whole composition, move for the adoption of Committee Report Number 04. I do so move, Mr. Chair.
Is there any second to the motion? As Jules, seconded by all members present, is there any objection? Hearing none, the motion is heard by approved. Next item.
For calendar business, no unfinished business. Business for the day for second reading. Product of Committee Report Number 3 and 04, proposed city ordinance Number 623 Series 2025 by the Honorable Samuel Rodriguez.
The Honorable Samuel Rodriguez is now recognized.
Thank you again, Mr. Chair. This is the product of Committee Report Number 03-2025. This representation would like to pass City Ordinance Number 623 Series of 2025. An ordinance amending 625 license to operate fish pan, fish pen, fish cage, fish trap, and other structures for the culture of fish and other aquatic species. Providing penalty for violation thereof and for other purposes under City Ordinance Number 406 Series of 2020. An ordinance codifying all laws in fisheries and aquatic resources, rules and regulations in the city of Mati. For second reading, I do so move, Mr. Chair.
There is a motion as manifested by Counselor Rodriguez, City Ordinance Number 623 Series of 2025. Do I hear a second to the motion? Jules, seconded by all members present, is there any objection? Hearing none, the motion is heard by approved.
Mr. Chair, with the permission of the august body, I would like to tackle this ordinance for its third and final reading under an assigned business on suspended house rule.
Thank you so much, Counselor Rodriguez. Please take note, Mr. Secretary.
Properly noted, Mr. Chair.
Next item. Counselor Valera.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is now the product of Committee Report Number 04. An ordinance prescribing the calibration and sealing of dispensing pumps of liquid petroleum products retail outlets in the city of Mati imposing fees in the registration, sealing of dispensing pumps, providing penalties and violation thereof and for the other purposes. I do for the approval for the second reading, Mr. Chair. I do so move.
There is a motion as manifested by Counselor Valera, City Ordinance Number 620 Series of 2025. Do I hear a second to the motion? Jules, seconded by all members present, is there any objection? Hearing none, the motion is heard by approved.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
May I ask permission from this august body, Mr. Chair, that this draft City Ordinance Number 620 will be discussed under an assigned business with a suspended house rules for possible approval for the third reading.
Yes, thank you so much, Counselor Valera. Please take note, Mr. Secretary.
Properly noted, Mr. Chair.
Next item.
For an assigned business, we have two urgent communications, Mr. Chair.
Counselor Capinha, for the conversion of this august body into a committee as a whole.
Mr. Chair, I move for the conversion of this plenary into committee as a whole, Mr. Chair. I do so move.
Yeah, there is a motion as manifested by Counselor Capinha for the conversion of this august body into a committee as a whole. Do I hear a second to the motion? Jules, seconded by all members present, is there any objection? Hearing none, the motion is heard by approved. We are now under a committee as a whole. Yes, Counselor Kobe Capinha.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, Communication Number 39-2025, which is jointly referred to the Committee on Social Services and the Committee on Finance is now open for any queries, Mr. Chair.
Is there any queries with regards to Communication Number 39-2025? There being none, please proceed.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I now move for the adoption of the committee as a whole recommendation as requested in Communication Number 39-2025. I do so move.
There is a motion for the adoption of committee as a whole recommendation with regards to Communication Number 39-2025 as manifested by Counselor Capinha. Do I hear a second to the motion? Jules, seconded by all members present, is there any objection? Hearing none, the motion is heard by approved. Counselor Deeng Hirang.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. The floor is now open for any discussion regarding the memorandum of understanding with the different concerned government agencies, civil society organization, non-government organization, and other stakeholders for the creation of the project interagency committee, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Is there any query from the members with regards to Communication Number 40-2025? There being none, please proceed.
On behalf of the members of the Committee on Housing and Land Utilization, I now move for the adoption of the committee as a whole recommendation regarding Communication Number 40. I so move, Mr. Presiding Officer.
There is a motion being presented by Counselor Deeng Hirang. Is there any second to the motion? Jules, seconded by all members present, is there any objection? Hearing none, the motion is heard by approved. Counselor Capinha, for the conversion of this august body back to plenary.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I now move for the conversion of this committee as a whole back to plenary, Mr. Chair.
There is a motion for the conversion of this august body back to plenary. Jules, seconded by all members present, is there any objection? Hearing none, the motion is heard by approved. We are now back to plenary. Counselor Capinha.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, product of just converted committee as a whole, Mr. Chair, as requested in Communication Number 39-2025. I now move for a resolution. A resolution jointly sponsored by Honorable Abilino B. Capinha Jr. and Honorable Sina Princess D. Campos. A resolution authorizing the local chief executive, Honorable Michelle Enrabat, to enter into and sign for, in behalf of the city government of Mati, the memorandum of agreement with the Department of Social Welfare and Development relative to the implementation of the Assistance to Individuals in Crisis Situation Program. I now move for the passage of the resolution. I do so move, Mr. Chair.
There is a passage for a resolution as manifested by Counselor Capinha. There is a passage for a resolution as manifested by Councilor Kapinya. Do I hear a seek out to the motion? Jolly see candid by all members present. Is there any objection? Hearing none, the motion is heard by approve. Councilor Dayang Hirang.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. Ingong ko sina, delete sina. Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. On behalf of the members of the Committee on Housing and Land Use, I now move for the passage of a resolution authorizing the local chief executive, the Honorable Michel and Rabat, to enter into and sign for in behalf of the City Government of Mati, the memorandum of understanding among the national, between the National Housing Authority, the Province of Dava Oriental, the Commission on Human Rights, the Presidential Commission for the Urban Poor, the Department of Interior and Local Government, the Department of Human Settlements and Urban Development, the Department of Education, the Department of Soc- Social Welfare and Development, the Philippine National Police, Police Regional Office, eleven, the Baranggai Local Government Unit of Dahikan, the Dava Oriental Electric Cooperative and the Mati Water District for the creation of the, uh, Project Interagency Committee in the City of Mati. I so move, Mr. Presiding Officer.
There is a motion being presented by Councilor Dayang Hirang. Is there any seek out to the motion? Jolly see candid by all members present. Is there any objection? Hearing none, the motion is heard by approve. May I request again, Councilor Kapinya, for the suspension of the house rule at the same time the conversion of this Ogos Badi into a committee as a whole.
Mr. Chair, I now move for the, uh, suspend, suspension of the house rules and at the same time to convert this plenary into committee as a whole, Mr. Chair. I do so.
There is a motion being stated by Councilor Kapinya. Do I hear a seek out to the motion? Jolly see candid by all members present. Is there any objection? Hearing none, we are now under suspended house rule at the same time the conversion of this Ogos Badi once again into a committee as a whole. Councilor Fabio.
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Commissioner. Communication number thirty-eight, Series of Two Thousand Twenty-Five, we have two proposed resolution, open for discussion.
The floor is now open, uh, for any discussion. There being none, please proceed.
I move for the adoption of the two proposed resolution coming from communication number thirty-eight. Uh, I do so move.
There is a motion for the adoption of the committee as a whole recommendation as manifested by Councilor Fabio. Do I hear a seek out to the motion? Is there any objection? Hearing none, the motion is heard by approve. Councilor Kapinya. Communication number thirty-one and...
Mr. Chair, uh, communication number thirty-one and communication number, uh...
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four is now open for any uh, discussion.
The floor is now open. Is there any query? There being none, you may proceed, Councilor Kapinya.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I now move for the committee as a whole recommendation as requested in communication number thirty-one and communication number thirty-four. I do so move, Mr. Chair.
There is a motion for the adoption of the committee as a whole recommendation with regards to communication number thirty-one and thirty-four. Do I hear a seek out to the motion? Jolly see candid by all members present. Is there any objection? Hearing none, the motion is heard by approve. Next item. Again, may I request Councilor Kapinya for the conversion of this Ogos Badi back to plenary.
Mr. Chair, I now move for a resolution. Declaring...
Back, back to plenary.
I'm sorry. Mr. Chair, I now move for the conversion of this, uh, committee as a whole back to plenary.
There is a motion for the conversion of this Ogos Badi back to plenary. Uh, is there any seek out to the motion? Jolly see candid by all members present. Is there any objection? Hearing none, we are now back to plenary. Councilor Dayang Hirang. Uh, uh, Councilor, uh... Roger Fabio.
And, uh, the whole composition of the Committee on Health and Sanitation, I move for the passage of resolution confirming the approval and adoption of local health board resolution number zero-one, Series of Two Thousand Twenty-Five, requesting the local chief executive to issue an executive order for the creation of the management support unit to assist the local health board operation and management of the special health fund. I do so move.
There is, there is a motion for the passage of resolution as manifested by Councilor Fabio. Do I hear a seek out to the motion? Jolly see candid by all members present. Is there any objection? Hearing none, the motion is heard by approve.
Seek out a resolution, Honorable Presiding Officer. I move for the passage, a resolution confirming the adoption of the local health board, resolution number two, Series of Two Thousand Twenty-Five, adapting the Department of Health, Department of Budget Management, Department of Finance, Department of Interior and Local Government and the Field Health Joint Memorandum Two Thousand Twenty-One Dash Zero-Zero-One, entitled Guidelines for the Allocation, Utilization, Monitoring and Accountability of the Special Health Funds. I do so move.
There is a motion as manifested by Councilor Fabio. Do I hear a seek out to the motion? Jolly see candid by all members present. Is there any objection? Hearing none, the motion is heard by approve. Councilor Kapinya.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. With your permission, I have to, uh, pass, ilam sa passage of these two, uh, resolutions, Mr. Chair, for thirty-one and thirty-four communication.
Yeah, you may lam sa the passes.
I now move for a resolution declaring the annual budget for year twenty-twenty-five of Baranggai Mamali, this city to be operative. I now move for a resolution declaring the annual budget for year twenty-twenty-five of Singeniang Kabataan of Baranggai Langka, this city to be operative. Mr. Chair, I now move for the passage of these two resolutions.
There is a motion for ilam sa passes of the said resolutions as manifested by Councilor Kapinya. Do I hear a seek out to the motion? Jolly see candid by all members present. Is there any objection? Hearing none, the motion is heard by approve. Thank you so much, Councilor Kapinya. We are still under suspended house rules, Councilor...
For third and final reading, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, Councilor Valera is now recognized. Oh. Uh, Councilor Rodriguez, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This representation again would like to pass City Ordinance Number Six-Two-Three, Series of Twenty-Twenty-Five for its third and final reading. I do so move, Mr. Presiding Officer.
There is a motion for the passage of proposed City Ordinance Number Six-Two-Three, Series of Twenty-Twenty-Five as manifested by Councilor, uh, Rodriguez. May I request everybody to, to those who support this said ordinance, please raise your right hand.
All members present voted for the measure, Mr. Chair. No objection.
Therefore, this proposed city ordinance number six-two-three, Series of Twenty-Twenty-Five is now approved. Thank you so much, Councilor Rodriguez. Councilor Valera.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Committee on, uh, Energy and Water Utilities, uh, move for the passage of an ordinance, drop City Ordinance Number Six-Two-Zero, Series of Twenty-Twenty-Five for the third and final reading. I do so move, Mr. Chair.
There is a passage for the City Ordinance Number Six-Two-Three, Six-Two-Zero, Six-Two-Zero, Series of Twenty-Twenty-Five as manifested by Councilor Valera. May I request, uh, everybody to please, uh, raise your hands in support to do, to the said ordinance.
All members voted for the measure, Mr. Chair. No objection.
Therefore, this proposed city order number, number six-two-zero, the, Series of Twenty-Twenty-Five is now approved. Thank you so much, Councilor Valera. May I request Councilor Kapinya for the lifting of the suspended house rules.
Mr. Chair, I now move for the lifting of the suspension of the house rules. I do so move.
There is a motion for the lifting of the suspended house rules as manifested by Councilor Kapinya. Do I hear a seek out to the motion? Jolly see candid by all members present. Is there any objection? Hearing none, uh, the motion is heard by approve. Next item, Mr. Secretary.
Announcement other matters.
Is there any announcement? Yes, Councilor Kapinya.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, since we are, uh, uh, majority in presence, Mr. Chair. In attendance, ag palibot na kukaroon ang committee report for the administrative case. So I would like to request, uh, yang, palibot yang. Uh, I would like to request the members of this Ogos Badi that uh, before siguro tamatapos, uh, ipermahan na lang nato ang committee report daan and uh, the, uh, decision. So we can, uh, include that one in the order of business by next regular session, Mr. Chair. And also, Mr. Chair, we would like to acknowledge the presence of the senior high students of the Mati National Comprehensive High School observing our regular session today. And this is also a part of their immersion, no? As, uh, grade twelve, grade twelve students of Mati High, Mati National Comprehensive High School. So again, uh, we would like to recognize their presence, Mr. Chair.
Thank you so much, Councilor Kapinya. That's why a while ago, I asked them, kung kinsay mag city councilor sila, how may naningob? Thank you so much for, uh, coming. Thank you for your presence.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, uh, isa pa ka announcement, Mr. Chair. I have here pending referral, uh, of the, uh, ordinance, Mr. Chair. Refer last December seventeen, uh, for the commu- for the Committee on, uh, Good Government, Public Ethics and Accountabilities and also in today's regular session, communication number thirty dash Twenty-Twenty-Five. Advanced information lang, no, sa members of Committee on Good Government that uh, being the chairman, I am planning to call on for a, uh, uh, committee hearing at any time this week. So, uh, ako alang isent ang, uh, official invitations sa offices for, to tackle two, two, uh, proposed ordinances, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Is that all, Councilor Kapinya?
Yes.
Thank you so much. Please take note, members of this, uh, Ogos Badi. Any other announcement?
Our next regular session would be on February four, nine AM, birthday of Councilor Kubi Kapinya.
Please take note to the birthday of Councilor Kapinya. Is there any other, uh, announcement? There being none, what is the next item, Mr. Secretary?
Adjournment followed by closing prayer by the Honorable Ilmundo Pang Junior.
Uh, the Honorable Pang is now recognized.
I now move for the adjournment of today's session. I do so move.
There is a motion to adjourn the session as manifested by Councilor Pang. Is there any seek out to the motion? Jolly see candid by all members present. Is there any objection? Hearing none, the session is heard by adjourn. Councilor Pang for the closing prayer.
In the name of the Father, the Son, the Holy Spirit, amen. Thank you for the opportunity to gather, to gather together and share our thoughts and ideas. We are grateful for the time and energy invested by each person here. As we close this session, we ask for your guidance in the decisions we've made and the actions we're taking moving forward, granting us wisdom, strength and unity in all that we do. Please watch over us as we go our separate ways. In your name we pray, amen. In the name of the Father, the Son, the Holy Spirit.
Thank you so much. May I have one satanan?